Good afternoon. Welcome to the Pitt County Board of Commissioners, August 21st. Please come to order with her roll call.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to excuse Commissioner Tom Coulson.
Second.
Motion to excuse Tom Coulson has been made. And I got a push number one. He is excused. Thank you. Now we'll have roll call.
You can just put it on a motion screen.
We're all here except the excuse commissioner. Thank you. We have invocation by Commissioner Mark Smith. And we have, uh, pull it.
Let us pray. Gracious heavenly Father, thank you for this day that you've given us. Thank you for your love and mercy and grace. We just ask your guidance this evening as we try to make the best decisions for the citizens of Pitt County. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I'd like to welcome, um, young lady from Rose High School, Clara. Clara, state your name for me or I might mess it up.
It's Clara.
Want to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure. Good evening. My name is Clara Foltz. I'm currently a rising senior at J. H. Rose High School, and I will be serving as the secretary in the organization FBLA, Future Business Leaders of America, this upcoming school year. Thank you for having me this evening.
Thank you so much. You may lead us to the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes ma'am. At this time, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Thank you for having me.
And thank you. You may return to your seats, stay there full time, or leave it whenever you like. All right. Approval of the agenda is...
Madam Chair, I would like to move that we approve the agenda with exception that we remove item 10 for discussion and direct staff to set a workshop date for the commission to discuss in further detail our excess ARPA distributions.
I'll second that.
Thank you. It has been motioned by Commissioner Nunnely that we remove item 10, and it has been seconded by Commissioner White. Let's vote please. The motion passed as an, uh, as an amendment to our agenda. Uh, Madam Manager, right?
Yes.
Yes. Good job.
Okay. Public addresses to the board. You have one person signed up to speak, Jonathan Landon. And if the attorney will read the statement as he approaches.
Pitt County welcomes all comments on matters of public concern. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak, a total of 30 minutes is set aside for public address to the board. Please state your name and address prior to speaking.
Good evening. My name is Jonathan Landon.
Uh, excuse me. Let's talk in the mics so the people in the world can hear us.
Is this better? All right. Good evening. My name is Jonathan Landon. My address is 4959 Totty Road, Foreville, North Carolina. I'm the chief of the Fountain Rule Fire Association. With the amendment or the change y'all just made to y'all's agenda, it kind of changed while I'm here. But Madam Chairwoman and Commissioners, I'd like to thank y'all for the opportunity to stand before y'all on behalf of the Fountain Rule Fire Association. It was brought to my attention by one of our board members that y'all had ARPA funds that were going to be reallocated, and I was able to confirm this with a county commissioner. And I was here, because I'm sure all y'all aware, I sent a letter back in December requesting allocation for these funds to build a training facility on the western side of the county between Foreville and Fountain. I would ask that we be allowed to present, I was asked to present tonight during the discussion, but to be able to present during y'all's retreat when y'all discuss the ARPA funds, I can, so we can show the need for this training facility and how it would benefit the citizens of Pitt County. So I'm here to formally request to be added to the discussion for the ARPA funds.
That's not a problem. We would take that into consideration, the manager and I, and when we work on our agenda for that retreat. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
You look good.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chairwoman, we don't have anyone else signed up to speak, but we do have some special guests in our audience this evening. If the board would indulge your introductions.
Oh, yes. I would love to have them come up as you call them.
Okay. We are pleased this evening to have Representative Tim Reader in the audience. If you would like to stand and be recognized, and you're welcome to say a word or two if you'd like, or just say hello.
Or come to the podium so you can show your face on our camera.
Thank you much. Thank you very much, Madam Chairwoman. And I think you told me I had 20 minutes for a talk. I think you all, you said you would cut me off if I went too long. So, thank you very much from the Bastion and Raleigh where we have been working hard this session. I represent District 9 in Southern Pitt County. And although we haven't been in session the last couple of weeks, it's not that we're not working hard. I think the one question I get asked most often is where are we with the budget? And as I was telling some of you before, the budget will be ready on the 15th. I just don't know which month that will be. We've had some protracted negotiations that are moving forward. Some of the delays that we've had are really because some members in the negotiation and leadership have been away from Raleigh, hit meetings or vacation. So that's really what has been slowing us down. I feel like we have a good plan on the budget. I would love to say what the state raises and where the money's going to be spent, but I don't want to put myself out there until we actually see it on paper. But I feel confident that we're going to have a good, strong budget that is going to help with the state employees, that I know we have a lot of vacancies, so we need to do something with salaries for both teachers and state employees. I know that we need to make some investments, strategic investments in the state moving forward. So I'm really proud to be able to advocate for the needs here in Pitt County and to be up in Raleigh. And I would add, for any of you who would like to come up there, be happy to show you around. I actually took the tour of the building, so I know how to give the fourth grade tour of the building. And I'm here to represent the people, not just of Southern Pitt County in the district, but really the entire county and the east. And it's my pleasure to be there for you and to represent you. And I'll be happy to answer any questions, or I'll take you leave and sit down.
All right. I'd like to invite you to our discussion for the retreat. When we have it, I hope our clerk and manager will let you know. And we'd love to have you be part of it.
If I'm available, I would be, my pleasure to be there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate you being here. And secondly, I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce, if she would come forward, Abby Kimmel. And Abby Kimmel, this board has heard me talk before about our opportunity jointly with the city of Greenville and Pitt County to bring onboard an AmeriCorps Lead for NC Fellow. So Abby Kimmel started last Monday with the county. She'll be with us a year through next July. She is a graduate of UNC Chapel Hill, having majored in Environmental Studies and minored in Urban Planning. She's going to focus on sustainability issues for the county, electric vehicles, EV charging stations, drainage, stormwater issues, and some other things that impact our environment as we move forward. And we'll spend this year researching what we have and what recommendations she would share with us by the end of the year. So I wanted you all to get to see and meet Abby. Many of you have already met her over the course of the last week, and if there's anything you'd like to say.
Yeah. Hello, everyone. I'm just very grateful for this opportunity, and I'm excited to be here. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you. We're going to have fun with you with all of you. I know I am. Thank you very much.
Okay. And then as I'm looking out, I might be a little bit remiss not to recognize Carl Wilson, the mayor of the town of Bethel, who is present with us this evening as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
It's pretty hard for me to see among the bright lights back there, so if there's another elected official, we don't want to slight you.
I'd like to say good evening to everyone.
Two seconds.
Yes, ma'am. I'm the newly appointed mayor of Bethel, and I look forward to working with all the commissioners and everyone in this room here, because everything, Winneville's filling up, Greenville's filling up, and everything is pushing north of the river. So we're looking forward to getting all the help we can get to make Bethel a great bedroom community, that we are, Beth is on the rise. So I look forward to working with each and every one of you. Thank you.
Okay. We are back to our agenda. And our first item on the agenda is the oath of office for our new dynamic county attorney, Mr. Waddell. We're ready to give you your oath of office. He's going to have fun. I've already spent some time with him in his office today.
And if his wife Erica would come forward.
Okay.
Into the center area. Janice Singleton, our deputy clerk to the board, will administer his oath.
Ms. Linton, raise your hand.
I'm Brian Higginson. Edward Wardell.
Hi, Brian. David Wardell.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities which are.
And authorities which are.
Or may be established.
Or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor.
And that I will endeavor.
To support.
Support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And I will well.
And I will well.
And truly serve the county of Pitt.
And truly serve the county of Pitt.
North Carolina.
North Carolina.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right. I would like very much for you to turn around. Wait, is the camera, so the camera can see you and your lovely wife. We're happy to have you. Welcome to Pitt County, Mrs. Waddell. It's a pleasure seeing you. Any more of your family here?
Yes.
I, I, could you come up and stand with him so we can all see you from beyond this Oh, please tell, introduce your, introduce your family, honey. I've been on vacation and I'm just excited.
We're going to take a picture.
All right.
Are they twins?
My sister and my mom.
All right.
We'll take good care of you.
Thank you. All right. You going to say something, or are we going to wait till later on?
I don't, I don't want to take up a lot of time, but I do want to once again thank the board for your confidence in me. I've been here, going in my third week now, and I have to say, I have no doubt in my mind that I made the right decision to come to Pitt County. Everyone has treated me very well. I've had a chance to talk to commissioners. I've had a chance to talk to other members of the, uh, the team, the management team, the leadership team, even people outside of the leadership team. I've had lunch with them as well, and I've been contacted by a number of people. And I just want to say thank you. I look forward to serving the people of Pitt County and to interacting more with the board, and I know we can do great things, and I look forward to being a part of that. So, thank you.
Have you moved to Pitt County?
I am looking for the best option, so if anyone has really, a really...
I just wanted the public to know that you will be about.
Oh, absolutely. I'm looking for a really big house at little, little money. But before I leave, I would be remiss if I didn't thank my wonderful wife. She is there for me every step of the way. I want to thank my daughter, Charity. She came all the way down from Baltimore, the Baltimore DC area where she is in the Air Force, and she brought her two wonderful grandchildren with, with us, with her. And I believe my mother-in-law is there, Lolita. And I think my sister-in-law is out there as well, and that was a big surprise. I didn't know she was going to be there.
Were they in the picture?
Yes.
Oh, great.
But this is, this is really a big honor for us as a family, because we do everything as a family, and we all consider you family now as well. So, thank you.
Welcome. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. And when you get ready and get tired of my mouth, you can go on when you get ready to, unless you got the car. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Waddell. It's great to have you. I didn't mess up your main name the first night.
You did not?
Attorney.
Attorney Waddell. Did you mess up?
I'll leave the commissionering to you all. Thank you.
Join us.
And Madam Chair, if we could go down front for the next three presentations. And while we're heading down, I call forward Margarita Mazingo Howard. Would you come forward? And how did you stand on the black dot? While the chairwoman comes around.
I'll get me. I'll get me. It is my pleasure this evening to recognize Margarita Howard for her years of service with Pitt County Government. Upon her retirement, the commissioners have prepared and signed this resolution that says, "Resolution Honoring Margarita Mazingo Howard for Her Years of Service with Pitt County Government." Whereas Margarita Howard was hired on July 6th, 1992, in the position of Clerk, Typist III with Pitt County Government. And whereas Margarita Howard was promoted to an Income Maintenance Case Worker I in March 1993, followed by a promotion to Income Maintenance Case Worker II, and eventually Income Maintenance Case Worker III. She was promoted to an Income Maintenance Supervisor II in January 2011, and was later promoted to the Redetermination Program Manager position in August 2016. And whereas Margarita Howard completed Advanced Skills for Managers 5 by the Office of State Human Resources in August of 2016. And whereas, through her devotion to the citizens of Pitt County, Margarita Howard served as a member of the Pitt Social Services Traveling Team, which successfully procured a technology grant for over $316,000 from the USDA to improve the delivery of accurate and timely food and nutrition services benefits to the citizens of Pitt County. And whereas, Margarita Howard served on various boards, such as the Council on Aging, State Health Insurance Information Program, Pitt County Medicaid Transformation, and Managed Care. And now therefore be it resolved that the Pitt County Board of Commissioners does hereby express its gratitude and thanks to Margarita Mazingo Howard for her career of dedicated and exemplary service to the people of Pitt County, and honors her with this resolution of appreciation given under our hand and seal of Pitt County, adopted this the 21st day of August 2023, signed by the Vice Chair and attested by Kimberly Hines, clerk to the board. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we'll take a quick picture. Thank you.
Now, without an experience, would you like to share a second or two with us?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. First, I want to thank the citizens of Pitt County for allowing me to serve. When I came to Pitt County 31 years ago, my intent was to be here for five years. Obviously, I cannot count. But also, I'd like to thank the wonderful county commissioners here, the DSS administration, and the super team that I have with DSS in general. It has been a pleasure and honor. I'm very grateful for this opportunity and extremely thankful for all that Pitt County Government has given to me.
And we look forward to your volunteer. Again, thank you.
Thank you so very much. Okay. Next, if we have Alexis Butts come forward. This every month, we'll wait till Alexis comes forward and you can stand on the black tape. Thank you so much for being here this evening. This is always fun, and we do this monthly. Pitt County celebrates exemplary employees of the month each month. And this month, we congratulate Alexis Butts, who was selected for her tact and professionalism. Her nominator said that Alexis has contributed tremendously to the success of her team. She works in 911, as a telecommunicator in 911 Communications. She has performed duties outside the scope of her work to ensure that fellow employees are properly trained, perform an up-to-job expectations. Additionally, she arrives to her scheduled shifts always 10 minutes early, allows seamless transitions between shift changes, and does excellent work for the citizens of Pitt County. She has been with Pitt County Government just since 2021, and has served as a 911 telecommunicator in emergency management. So we are thrilled to have Alexis on Team Pitt County, and to present her this evening with a certificate of recognition that says Employee of the Month, August 2023, presented to Alexis Butts, Pitt County Emergency Management Communications, in recognition of your dedication and exemplary service to Pitt County Government and the citizens that we serve. So we will present that to you by the chairwoman.
Thank you so much for your wonderful service, and we look forward to many more years to come.
And the best part, a $100 check to go do something fun.
Welcome aboard. Say, say a word or two.
No, thank you.
And then, we need a picture? Terrific. Thank you. And then we have one last recognition this evening. If Jay Morris would come forward. Our Fire Marshal in Emergency Management. Thrilled to have Jay join us this evening, and this was a recognition that Jay received in the community that we could not let pass by to show our continued appreciation for him. So Jay has received the American Red Cross Northeastern North Carolina Chapter 2023 Disaster Cycle Services Partner of the Year Award. It was issued to him as Pitt County's Fire Marshal within Pitt County Emergency Management Services. And the Red Cross tells us that this award is presented to individual or individuals or partner organizations who assist the Red Cross with meeting the mission in the communities that we serve. The award is given to a partner that gives of their time to help those in need. And Jay, in particular, helped the Red Cross make over 75 homes safer in Pitt County in fiscal year 23. They said that his desire to ensure that we have safer communities, as well as providing education during installs of fire alarms, makes him a valuable partner and an asset to the Northeastern North Carolina Chapter of the American Red Cross. So we are so proud to have Jay on our team, and wanted to share this, if he would present his award.
We are so happy to have you.
It's heavy.
Especially, oh, and this is nice, but don't go anyplace because we need your service for many more years. Thank you.
Not too late.
You want to say something, or we're going to take pictures? Please do.
No, just, you know, I'd like to thank county for taking the time to recognize me. I will say, Brian, I hadn't met you yet, but, um, you know, I've worked other places. This is a very family-oriented organization, and I'm enjoying my time here, but I do want to, this is a team effort. David Jones, he's the regional supervisor with Red Cross, and I can't thank him enough that it's not many people that 3:00 in the morning, I give him a call, and he wakes up with a smile, or at least that I see. There's so many organizations out here that, that we don't see, especially in the times of need, you're kind of taking advantage, or we take for granted. But, um, you know, thankful for what to do and for the partnership, and thank you for taking the time to recognize me.
Absolutely.
We have been blessed. And I tell you, we look forward to pictures. Isn't that the theme of December?
I just did the State Emergency Management.
And that concludes our presentations for this evening.
The next item on our agenda is item number eight, items for report.
And this is the Pitt Greenville Airport. If Bill Hopper would come forward. And as Bill Hopper comes forward, we'll also recognize in the audience is John Banks, Chairman of the Pitt Greenville Airport Authority.
Did you wave, Mr. Banks? Okay, all right. Thank you.
Good evening. I just want to thank everybody for this opportunity to be able to talk about Pitt Greenville Airport on an annual basis. We're, you know, we have a lot going on at the airport, and we're very excited to, you know, with some of the possibilities and everything we have going on, this is an opportunity to talk about some of those possibilities, talk about what we're doing at the airport. I also want to thank Vice Chairman Nunnely. He serves on our Board of Directors, and you're, you're served very well at the airport by, by Mr. Nunnely, and just want to thank him very much, as well as the staff of the Pitt County. We get a lot of support from the staff here, and just want to very much appreciate Janice for, you know, allowing us to bug her staff every so often. So we'll just go and get started. Get into, first of all, just that, just kind of give you a little overview of Pitt Greenville Airport. We have currently 19 full-time employees and one part-time employee. We have A. Airport Authority Board members, and we have probably the most active board that I've worked with in my career, and I think Vice Chairman Nunnely will attest to that. We get a lot done at these meetings. Law enforcement is provided by Pitt County, which we also very much appreciate, and have a great staff here. American Airlines with Connecting Hub in Charlotte is the only service that we have right now. I'll talk a little bit about where we're going with that. The Transportation Security Administration is also a tenant of ours, and a very good tenant that we very much appreciate having. Our rental cars, we have Ava's Budget, as well as Enterprise National Alamo, and they're located in the terminal. And we also have First Class Bistro Restaurant located in there, as well as we're just, tomorrow we're going to be finishing up on a new conference room with about capacity of 50, and we're hoping that that'll be a, a nice offering that our restaurant can, can provide as far as event space. This just goes over the operations, or the, it's actually the employments that we've had. These are passengers that are boarded on a plane. If you look in, oops, I'm sorry. If you look in the pre-pandemic in 2019, you'll see that we were sitting just shy of 55,000 employments when we got into 2020, and, and we had about a three-month period where we didn't have any service at all, as well as just everything was, was starting to go, you know, basically everything quieted down quite a bit in the air, in the airline industry. We had 19,000 employments. 2021, we had about 37,000, and then we reduced to 36. This is a reflection of the number of, of flights that we had, because in 2021, they did start out with four, then they went to three, and then down to two. And then through most of 2022, we did have just two flights a day. So when you look at that, that just shows you how full the planes are. The planes are full, but we have two third, one-third the flights, or I guess, you know, two-fifths the flights that we had prior to. This shows you, this is something that I like showing people, because if you think of Pitt Greenville Airport as just something where either you get on a flight to, you know, on American Airlines and fly where you want to go, or maybe you're getting on a small plane or a private plane and, and going somewhere locally on the East Coast, that's not the case. If you look on this map, this is from 2021, and each, each, with the exception of Washington, Idaho, and New Mexico, you'll see that every state, there's been a non-stop flight. These are non-stop flights. So, you know, we are a connection to anywhere in the country. And I do know for a fact that in 2022, Idaho and New Mexico are added to the list, because I, I do know of some people that actually did fly there from... because I, I do know of some people that actually did fly there from, from here. So we're, we're, we're an airport that is very much, uh, very much a commodity to the, to the local area. I'm going to get in a little bit in economic impact. Every two years, the state of North Carolina does an economic impact study for all the airports in the state. This is a fantastic way of letting people know how important this airport, not just this airport, but the other 71 airports in the state, how much they mean to, to each community. As you can see in North Carolina in general, we're a $72 billion economic, $72 billion economic impact. About 60 million, as some of you might expect, is Charlotte. And then the other airports kind of make up the others. We have 330,000 jobs, $23 billion in personal income, and 3.7 billion in tax revenue. This just shows you the location of the airports, the 72 public airports. This doesn't include all the privates, but 72 public airports in the state of North Carolina. This is Pitt Greenville Airport on its own. We have 1,225 jobs that we, that, that we attribute to, $84,580,000 in personal income. This is something that, that I'm sure that you'll all like to see is that $14 million in, in state and local taxes are attributed to the airport and about $267 million economic output. And what I want to do is I want to get into the diversity. I know people have seen the hangars that have been built there. They, they know, you know, the airlines, we're trying to get airlines. We've seen airline, you know, the services reduction. We're trying to expand it and I'm confident that we will eventually. But this just shows you, pre-pandemic, pretty much between general aviation, which is, you know, your small private aircraft, based corporate aircraft, and American Airlines. Each one did about a third of the, of the activity at, at Pitt Greenville Airport. So this is when things are going good and we're just kind of chugging along. Then 2021, during the pandemic, you'll see that actually based corporate became very important. And this is like your private, you know, the, the, um, base jets, which we do have a number of, they're based at Pitt Greenville Airport. And you'll notice that they got pretty close to about half of the activity there. And then post-pandemic, the airline, because of only the, the two flights a day that we've had in 2022, American got down to about a quarter of the activity. And then you'll see that there's kind of a split between general aviation and based corporate. And then we get into the seven new corporate hangars. We are actively, you know, looking for tenants in those. We have one tenant, one. We have two other that we, it should just be a matter of time. We're just kind of working out some of the particulars. And then we have the other two. The, the thing about these hangars is they are completely paid for. We were able to, to get CARES Act funding. I'm very thankful to the, to our board. They were very much committed to using this money in ways that we can't normally use it. And we lost airline activity. And the whole point of the CARES Act was to try to make up for the losses that you had due to the pandemic. And at Pitt Greenville Airport, we made very good choices to make sure that happened in building those hangars. And you can see that if we do fill those hangars, with American being at two flights a day, the base corporate goes up significantly and, and, and gets close to about half of what we've got at the airport. Then we add on an additional airline, which we are actively pursuing. If we get just two more airlines, that would, that, that would make it to where suddenly the general aviation side gets a little low and then the airlines take over quite a bit. The thing about the airlines, the corporate are great because they're, they're fantastic tax revenue to the local economy. However, they buy a lot of fuel, they, they rent hangars. From each hangar that we rent, and this is very conservative numbers, we could probably get about $100,000 out of each hangar, which is very significant. That's another half million dollars a year that we could possibly get from the five we built. We're building two more. And then we also have plans to perhaps build one or two more as well. So we're, we're trying to get very aggressive. And of course, these are going to be hangars that are paid for. A lot of times, these are financed and you have, you know, you, you've got to pay for them, you know, as you go. These are hangars that are going to be paid for when we build them so that at, at the time, we're not going to have any money into them. It's just the money we get out of the rent. This just shows you some other growth and business opportunities we have. We do have a 90 acres this north of the old Belvoir Highway, or actually the Belvoir Highway. And that could be used for, for industrial area. We're actively working with, with, with Kelly here at Pitt County as well as the Greenville ENC Alliance to try to find ways to get that ready, shovel ready so that should somebody show an interest in it, we'd be able to react. As well as that we have these others. We have these, and it says 21 acres, that's actually 24 acres. But those are two 24-acre parcels. They have direct access to the airport. And we are talking with, with a number of, of different entities in, in looking to be tenants in those areas. And last, we'll start talking about the air service. This just shows you our cashmere area. This is where if given the choice to, to, of any air carrier airport, where to fly out of, this is, these are the people that would be closest to Pitt Greenville if all things were even between RDU and every other commercial airport in the area. So what you see in the yellow with the zip codes is, is that area. And that, that's, that's about a 700, just close shy of 800,000 people in that area. Now with American, this shows you one-stop connections that I'm showing you here. And there's, I believe, like 110 different one-stop connections that you can get through Charlotte. And we do have a grant that we've been given. It's one that we can't use and actually it happened about a week before the pandemic hit. However, we do, we are active in, in pursuing it. Just last week, I went with, with David Horn from the Greenville ENC Alliance to, to try to promote to different airlines. We sat with seven different meetings with airlines last week. But if we were to use that grant, this just shows you how it would expand. Basically, we'd be doubling our footprint with one-stop connections. This would be through Charlotte as well as Dulles in, in Washington DC. And then last, I'm going to yield the floor to Chairman Banks here. And I want to thank Chairman Banks very much for coming here tonight.
I've got a few words. Does it surprise you, Jen? First, I'm very humbled to be here. The board commissioners have appointed me on this board for several different times and I'm very humbled by your confidence in me. Back when I first got on the board, Tom Johnson and Beth Ward asked me, why did I want to get on the airport board? You remember that? It was a mess. She said, this is a mess. I said, well, I like a mess. I'll see if I can do something for you. And it's been, it's been a long journey. I'm a strategic planner. I had visions of the airport back in 2011. Most of those have come true. Extended our runway, got more hangars, increased our capital output. It's been a real interesting road. I have to thank Janice when she was the attorney. She humored me with my crazy ideas. And she said, she never told me no, but she did say, mm, can't do it that way, but maybe we can do it this way. And she was very creative, helping us form some good alliances between the city and county airport. And I'm very humbled by that. Now, our former member of the board, Donald Taylor, and I've said this before in the meetings, PGV is the gateway to Eastern North Carolina. People come here for business, for pleasure, for tourism. It's an economic driver. We don't, as Commissioner Nunley will tell you, we don't rubber stamp anything. There's always lively debate in our meetings. We have two attorneys on our board, Commissioner Nunley and Councilmember Robinson. And they take off their attorney hats in the board meeting, but they get very into the debate. And they, they keep the attorney hat off. We have an attorney sits in the background and kind of manages us. But they, they bring a wealth of information. And Commissioner Nunley can tell you that it takes more than a year to get productive on that board. Commissioner Ward's served on that board before. There's a lot of acronyms, a lot of government funding. You can't do this, you can't do that. So we try to creatively find a way to make things happen. Back when I did get on the board, the financial reporting was not as good as it should have been. No money was missing, but we just couldn't report it well. Well, we, we got a CPA on the board. Well, that CPA spent many years now, three years or so, getting the financial reporting in line. And Terry Monday has done a fabulous job at no charge to the county, which is great for us. And our financial reporting is very much in line with what you expect. And we can go to any meeting and tell you where we're spending money at, where it's coming from, where it's going. That's very important to us. In the last six years, we've done $30 million of improvements. $30 million without any local funds. That's unbelievable. We've done a repaving of Runway 0220. We've built five big hangars, two more big hangars five years ago with the help of Janice and commissioners. And we're going to build two more as, as Bill was talking about. Now, I know airplanes allow, but airplanes bring tourism, they bring business, they bring jobs. They're less polluting than they used to be, thank goodness. They bring propy taxes. We don't use, airplanes don't use roads, schools, mental health, or social services. So it's a good deal for the city and county for taxes. We love that. It's good for our community. COVID, Bill mentioned COVID. We got a $20 million grant from COVID CARES funding. We used $10 million for our budget and $10 million for hangar project. You can see those hangars, they're nice. Y'all came for the groundbreaking some time back. We're going to build two more hangars. And the reason we're building two more and can build is because of what the city and county did for us in a joint effort, helping us with a little non-budgeted item, giving us some propy taxes to help us replenish our savings account. It worked. Thank you, Janice. And Mr. Waddle?
Wardell.
Wardell? I'm teachable. Janice warned you, I'll be, I'll be coming to see you because I'm not full of, all my ideas are not done yet. So you got to put your creative head on. We need that creativity. An airline, another airline will not do away with our deficit. We have an $80,000 month deficit every month. The COVID money of $10 million that we used in the operating budget saved the city and county from having to finances. It's a great relief for us. We have approximately $2 million left, Bill. That $2 million will be spent in the next couple of years. And then thereafter, we'll have an $80,000 month deficit. It used to be 100, it's down to 80. It's a great thing. But the hangars will help, the fuel will help, but we need another airline. Since Janet told me today, since 2011, first thing that the commissioners told me, get us another airline. We work on that every meeting. Commissioner Nunley can tell you, that's the topic every meeting. And we're more than glad to have somebody from the county to go with Bill next time to see how these meetings go. People think we can just go in and say, hey, come on down. Don't worry, I wish it did, but it's a ongoing project. It's at the forefront of every meeting. So we're thinking that. That, that new airline, when we get one, will make our deficit up. We get parking, we'll get fuel, and we'll get rent. So we are working hard to get that in here. Since 1999, the city and county have not had a budgeted line item for the airport. That's a long time. And we, we're proud of that, but expenses going up. Insurance for employees are going up. Wages have to go up. Cost of air conditioning goes up. So the $80,000 is not thrown away. It's very, very frugally spent. We have a financial reporting meeting every meeting. Commissioner Nunley can verify that we talk about money a lot. Sometimes I lack of money. But we're very frugal with that money. The next five years, 34-plus million dollars will be spent. $34 million over a period of 10 years, that's 60-something million dollars. That's a lot of money at no cost to the county or the city or to our community. It's federal funds, we all pay taxes, but it's not coming out of coffers and that's beautiful. The, I'm going to my notes, make sure I covered everything. The airport's very entrepreneurial. I think Commissioner Nunley checks his head sometimes in our meeting. Well, where'd y'all come up with that at? And then he goes, oh, why can't you do that? It gets really fun sometimes, does it not, Commissioner? We strive to make our community better environmentally, a good place to work. I've asked the legislature for money for us to build an EGA terminal. Ladies and gentlemen, that's going to be 10 to 12 million bucks. FAA won't pay for it. The state is probably going to help us some. We're talking to our legislators. They're very open-minded about that and are promoting us for that. We appreciate it. But that general aviation terminal is where the private jets come in and private airplanes. We got the littlest one of any commercial airport state. It does not represent our community like it should. Plus, the fire department is old. The FAA will reimburse us for that. But we need new, we need a new facility. And that's in the path. Any questions?
Are there any questions from the board member? I usually wait to ask mine because I do have to.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I have a question and maybe a comment. You know, at one time, we had some problems, as you're aware, of the citizen over at north of the river in terms of the noise.
Yes, sir.
Element. What, if anything, have you done to it? I haven't heard anything about that recently. But what have you done, if anything, to eliminate that, the noise from the citizen complaint?
Well, there is a traffic pattern that the FAA requires pilots to fly in. And they put patterns so that the majority of the airplanes do not fly directly over the house in refill terrace. That's the closest area to that. And most pilots abide by that because they live here, they understand the noise. The newer type jets, which make the most noise when they take off, are 50%, 75% less noisy than they were 15 years ago. They put out less pollutants, they're less noise, they're more efficient. Anytime you're close to an airport, you're going to have airplane noise. If you didn't have airplane noise, you wouldn't have airplanes. We just, we just try to make it minimal so they don't fly over the houses directly. That's, that's, that's the best that we can do and the FAA controls the patterns.
And also just, we do have, a lot of it comes from the, the Ospreys. They come out of New River, the marine helicopters. And what we'll do is, is I'll get on the radio and I, I will ask them if they can fly maybe, because I mean, they're, they're, you know, they, they have vertical takeoff and landing. So I'll ask them if they can go a little bit further down the runway to kind of get away from the neighborhood as well. So, so we, we work with, and, and the marine pilots are awesome. They, they're always ready to help out, so.
And also, you, you mentioned something about possibly new additional airlines coming in.
Yes, sir.
Can you tell us a little bit more about that? When is, when is predicted to come and how is it looking in terms of?
If I had a crystal ball and I could predict it, I would generally, would give you a great date. But when you deal with the airlines, even if they say an airline committed today, it'd be 12 months before it got here. You have to go through the regulatory FAA and the transportation federal government to give them the rights to fly in here. And then you have to do the scheduling, airline scheduling, and we've all seen it lately. Southwest, other ones, their computers, they have to really work hard to get a new route in place. And all that's going to be about a year ahead of time. So it takes that long. If they said today, an airline would say today, it'd be 12 months. Now, we've got a $750,000 grant Bill mentioned to entice the airline, to help them make up for any loss they may, may have. We've offered marketing dollars and other things to entice them here. But their biggest problem right now, they can't get pilots. They struggle to keep pilots. When COVID came, they furloughed and retired a bunch of pilots. They're struggling to keep pilots and get more pilots. That is an ongoing struggle. Pays great. It's a good, good occupation for a young person. But we have three or four trips a year to airline conferences. We spend probably $100,000 a year in travel and airline consultants to meet with airlines. And Bill sells them hard. I go to some of these meetings. We've invited some other people besides our board members so our citizens in Greenville know more about what's going on. It's a struggle. You have 20 minutes to present your, your case. And then you get to the next one. And you follow up behind them and keep selling them, sell, sell the community hard. And David Horn did a great job with Bill. It's, it's a, it's a tough nut to crack. And I'll say this again, in this meeting, COVID saved our bacon, as Ginger quoted me in the last meeting. They saved our bacon. If it hadn't been for COVID, we'd had a humongous death. If it hadn't been for COVID, we'd had a humongous deficit that would have really been bad for the community. Thank goodness, COVID was terrible, but we got these funds from COVID, we've used them, we create stewardship, and the community will benefit from it in the long term. But we're trying to airline every day, sir. That's on the agenda every day.
Any more questions from the board? The one complaint I hear is, we need to travel from north to south, I mean, north and south.
Yes, ma'am.
We now just go west and come back.
Sure, yes, ma'am.
And the cancellation, sometimes flights are canceled, and it hurts your scheduling and where you need to be.
Yes, ma'am, I travel quite a bit internationally and within the United States. If I miss one international connection, it may be several days I'm stuck in a hotel somewhere, so I can feel that pain. But the only thing we do at the airport, we run space, we sell them fuel, and even the pilots have a scheduler that tells them when to take off, when to land, yada, yada. We have no control over them, we have no control of the routes. Now, we ask people for different routes they want to go to, and other than Charlotte. And in meetings with other airlines, we're talking with them about other destinations, so we'd have a better choice for our passengers.
I travel with another board, and they always take me to Newburgh, because Newburgh never canceled, this is what they say.
Yes, ma'am.
So I just wanted you to know that. Are there any more questions? We thank you for your report, we appreciate it, we're trying to catch up on our agenda.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Croomes.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners and Manager. Tonight I bring you the July 2023 Finance Report for the General Solid Waste and EMS Funds. We're one month into the fiscal year, or 8.3% of the year. For the general fund, we have collected 5.6% of anticipated revenues and spent 6.5% of budgeted expenditures. Solid waste, we have collected 10.3% and spent 6.3%. EMS, we have collected 5.2% and spent 8.2%. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. If not, it's my recommendation for a motion to approve the monthly finance report as presented.
Motion to approve is presented.
Motion, who was that second? Motion by Commissioner Nellie, second by Commissioner Ward. Let's vote, please. Motion passed.
Thank you.
You have your wish, next item on the agenda, please. Mr. Hill.
Good evening, Chairwoman Perkins-Williams, Commissioners and Manager Gallagher. Tonight I bring you the July 2023 Collection Report. The Pitt County fiscal year to date, July 1st, 2023 through July 31st, 2023, combined collection rate for real and personal property is 10.46%. The combined collection rate one year ago for real and personal property was 11.74%. Pitt County Tax Administration continues to pursue all outstanding taxes using the necessary remedies available through the North Carolina General Statutes. It's my recommendation that the board approve the July 2023 Tax Collection Report.
Motion, please.
Send move.
Motion by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Huggins. Let's vote. Thank you. Motion passed, Madam Clerk. Next item on the agenda. Our manager.
2024 Schedule of Values, Russell Hill again.
Did I skip them? Oh, thank you, Russell, for standing there, get going. I'm moving too fast, I'm sorry.
Hello again. Tonight I'm presenting to the board the 2024 Schedule of Values. I have just a short presentation. So part of the reason we have to present to the board is required by North Carolina General Statute 105317B1. It states that each assessor is responsible for preparing uniform schedule values, standards and rules for appraising all real property at its true market value and its present use value. And before you tonight, you have two manuals. The larger manual is the market value manual, and the second, the smaller one, is the present use value. So what is the Schedule of Values, Standards and Rules? It's a manual used by the real property staff that contains sufficient details on how to appraise real property. It's analysis of market data for the time period just prior to January 1st, 2024. That's the larger manual, and then the present use values are developed by the Use Value Advisory Board through statewide analysis of market data of rents. The manuals resulting from these values and standards, rules are referred to as the Schedule of Values, or the SOV. The Schedule of Values is to be used for the basis of value on all real property until the next reappraisal. They'll take effect January 1, 2024, and they will be in effect until the next scheduled reappraisal after that, which is January 1, 2028. Just an overview of the contents of the larger manual. Sections 1 through 4 is taught as an introduction, standards and theories. Sections 5 through 8 is evaluation methods and techniques. 9 through 12 is the application of appraisal techniques. 13 through 15 is the application of the Schedule of Values, validation of property characteristics, and then 16 through 20 are additional appraisal resources. And I'm just going to go just over a brief timeline for the board over the next few meetings as for the adoption of the Schedule of Values.
Madam Chair, I move to.
Second.
I think. We don't want to adopt just yet, but if you will hold that thought, Madam Chair, if she could, until two meetings from now.
That's correct.
Tonight's your presentation, next meeting your public hearing, and then we need that motion.
We don't.
Do you want to continue?
Thank you, it's for report only. He's going to continue.
Okay, but we still on it, okay.
Yes, ma'am. So the process for adopting the schedule, as Janice kind of summed up, there's a three-step process over the next three meetings. Step one is tonight, where I'm delivering the schedule to the board. Step two is the public hearing, which will be at your next meeting, September 11. And step three will be your September 25 meeting, where we'll ask the board to actually adopt the Schedule of Values. So I kind of covered the next few slides here. And in between those, there will be advertisements in the Daily Reflector, accordingly presenting the next steps to the public as well. The Schedule of Values are on public display, there's one for the county manager's office, the tax assessor's office, we have it on the county website. We took one to the town of Bethel, Farmville, Winterville, and they're also on display at the Shepherd Memorial Library. So if anyone cannot make it to Greenville, we do have it strategically placed throughout the county as well for the public. And we will, tomorrow there should be an advertisement, and September 9 of the public inspection and the public hearing for your meeting on September 11. And we must give notice at least 21 days before we ask the board to present, I'm sorry, for the board to adopt that schedule, which will be on the September 25 meeting. So we're a little over 30 days on that requirement as well. At your next meeting, we'll have the public hearing, and once again, we won't be asking any, requesting any motion or action from the board at that meeting. On your September 25 meeting, we'll ask the board to adopt the Schedule of Values. And after that, we must, structurally, we have to run an advertisement for four consecutive weeks stating that the board adopted the schedule, how the person, if anyone in the public would like to appeal that, how they can appeal that to the North Carolina Property Task Commission. And those dates are September 30th, October 7, October 14, and October 21 is when those advertisements will run. And if no one challenges, the last day to challenge the Schedule of Values is October 30 of 2023 to the Property Task Commission. Any questions?
Thank you. You have in your packet, your board package, Mr. and Mrs. Commissioner, the dates that he gave us, take them out for the next time, and that was for report only, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is a grant opportunity for the pit stop. If you would call forward, Madam Chair, Kelly Andrews.
Kelly Andrews.
And Angela Lamson.
And Angela Lamson.
Angela Lamson.
Yes.
They will present to you generally the concept of pit stop and then ask your permission to apply for a grant. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman Perkins-Williams and Commissioners. It is my pleasure to partner with Dr. Angela Lamson, interim vice chancellor for the ECU Office of Economic and Community Engagement and a project that has been named Pit Stop. Dr. Lamson is passionate about serving Pitt County and eastern North Carolina, particularly solutions for essential needs in rural and underserved communities, and she has led the charge in developing the vision and roadmap for Pit Stop. I won't steal her thunder, but this is a proven sustainable model that has, we hope to recreate in Pitt County and call it Pit Stop, which will create a robust, multi-partner, integrated system of services and care in rural areas of the county. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Lamson to further explain the Pit Stop concept and the work done so far.
Thank you, Kelly. Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Dr. Angela Lamson, and I do serve as professor and as interim assistant vice chancellor for Economic and Community Engagement at East Carolina University. I'm also a marriage and family therapist, a licensed marriage and family therapist. However, I come to you tonight as a Pitt County resident to talk about a collaborative and an initiative that can improve access to a variety of health and well-being services in Pitt County called Pit Stop. I moved to North Carolina from the state of Iowa in July of 1999, and just three months after I moved, I learned through tragedy what this community was all about. Through hurricanes Floyd and Dennis, I was welcomed into a small but mighty team of healthcare providers who were devoted to meeting the social and healthcare needs of 1,300 children in Pitt County schools and their families who are deeply affected by those hurricanes. That experience and working alongside so many Pitt County residents and providers was life-changing for me. When I moved to Pitt County, I knew no one, but within 90 days, I was adopted into a new family called Pirate Nation, and my purpose in this community was cemented. Over the past 24 years since those hurricanes and the collaboratives that were sparked through the work that we did in Pitt County schools, I have been invited to co-create and sustain dozens of collaborative programs where mental health and social and primary care services are offered at the same place at the same time to residents. Imagine a place where a resident feels as though their symptoms of depression are just as important as their symptoms of diabetes. Teams that I have been part of have worked in healthcare systems, schools, military installations, all alongside educators, service members, and healthcare providers to deliver innovative and healthcare well-being services. Just prior to COVID-19, a small team of us in Pitt County began to imagine what would it be like if we could bring together a variety of these healthcare and well-being services and embed them into Pitt County neighborhoods, particularly in parts of Pitt County that did not have as much access to health and well-being programs. Our vision for Pit Stop was to establish satellite buildings in areas of Pitt County such as Bethel, or Farmville, or Aiden, that would provide a variety of services that included primary care, dental care, employment support, mental health, substance use recovery support, programs related to food insecurity, safe and affordable housing, and social services for youth, adults, and families. We began to talk about a way that numerous Greenville providers and services could visit these satellite buildings based on a calendar system. That would allow the providers and the partners the flexibility in choosing the number of days and the number of hours that they would be onsite delivering services, while also meeting the needs of our residents. Currently, we have over 50 partners who have expressed their interest in providing services at the Pit Stop. We also wanted Pit Stop to be sustainable. Our team listened to previous challenges and why some programs had not sustained. Our hope was that Pit Stop would have so many partners that even if one partner chose to not be a part of Pit Stop any longer, that many partners would still remain. This model is fiscally responsible because each partner or provider would rely on delivering the same clinical services and use the same billing process that they would if they were treating that resident in Greenville. That means there will be no direct billing through the Pit Stop. It would literally be a provider or a partner's professional home away from home. If there is no cost for that service in Greenville, there is no cost for that service in any of the Pit Stop. Pit Stop will offer an innovative and sustainable way for the collective talent in Pitt County organizations, agencies, and communities to work together in locations throughout the county to deliver a wide range of services that improve residents' health, well-being, and quality of life. It is not intended to be a location for urgent care or emergency services, but I promise you that Pit Stops will save lives every day. In 2022, our team started searching for buildings in Pitt County that could become a Pit Stop, and on May 2 of this year, the town commissioners of Bethel voted on a resolution for the first Pit Stop to be considered for establishment in the previous home of the Bethel Police Department. Interestingly, that building was originally Bethel's healthcare clinic, and many residents have shared with me that they were born in that building. Our next aim is to seek financial support to outfit the building and prepare it for the diverse Pit Stop services that can be delivered to residents. At this time, I'll invite Kelly Andrews to join me and share a little bit more about these efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lamson. And with your support, we would like to seek any and all options to fund this project. The cost to outfit this building, and we're talking about everything from infrastructure to the furniture and furnishings and all the internet and other things that would need to go in there is estimated at about $400,000 to $500,000. We have identified the Southeast Crescent Regional Commission State Economic and Infrastructure Development Grant, that's a mouthful, that could provide some of the needed funding. This grant, which is due on September 15, requires a 50% local match. So we ask for your consideration to authorize us to apply for this grant with a commitment to provide up to the 50% grant match for the Bethel Pit Stop. We will continue to explore other funding options with local partners or other state, federal granting opportunities for this match or for additional funds to make this project a reality.
All right, we need a motion to, for them to apply for the grant.
I move.
Motion by Commissioner Huggins, second by.
Ma'am.
Mr. McLaurin. Mr. McLaurin, I didn't hear you. Let's vote, please. Please vote. Motion passed, thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to recognize again Carl Wilton and Amy Harris from the town of Bethel for being here tonight.
Thank you.
And supporting this project.
I look forward to you working hard so that Griffin can be in this process.
Thank you.
It's a long ways out. I'm a country girl. Next item on the agenda, Madam Manager, it's your time.
Yes, for your manager's report this evening, we'll start with your meeting dates. We'll next meet in this room on September 11 at 6:00 p.m. and September 25 at 6:00 p.m. right here. A reminder that later this week, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, those who are registered to attend will attend the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Annual Conference in Wake County. Third date reminder is August 29 at 3:00 p.m. All are invited to attend the opioid municipalities meeting. As a result of our opioid settlement, an annual municipalities meeting is required by the North Carolina Memorandum of Understanding, and that meeting is scheduled for August 29 at 3:00 p.m. here in this room. Your fourth item that I wanted to report on has to do with the Board of Elections relocation. That move is complete. With the exception of some enhancements to outdoor signage and some updates to the Buzz Inn entry, our Board of Elections has successfully moved into the Technology Enterprise Center located at 1800 North Green Street across from the, near the county's North Campus Park. And so you will be hearing in the next few weeks some dates of multiple open houses to get folks out there. We're working on the signage, but they have made a smooth transition. We're working on the signage, but they have made a smooth transition and are operating out of their new facility and are very grateful for this board's support and investment to get them there. Their current space meets all of the issues and requirements that they had from their prior location. Also, elections-related, wanted to make you aware of a good news item that, as you may be aware, in your next election, based on legislation there, you will require a voter ID, a picture ID, in order to vote at the polls. So voter ID is here, and Pitt County has been proactive so that your county ID badge will be accepted as a voter ID. And so there's a list of acceptable voter IDs, and now Pitt County Government's ID badge is one of those acceptable forms of ID, which is a convenience for all of our employees when they go to vote.
Can we make sure and get that information out and maybe say in there what the things are?
Yes, we have.
I think we've been talking about it, and I'm sure we've done some of that.
Yep, we certainly can, and we've notified all employees. So the county ID is issued to county employees and board members, and so that would apply to us. But the Elections Office is also pushing out a great deal of information about the practical impacts of voter ID and how folks can be prepared so that everyone's vote can be heard.
And I'm sure the people, the general public would like to know where they can get one if they don't have one, and how much would it cost?
Yes, so your county ID is only available to county employees, but other forms of voter ID are available to members of the public, and I'll work with the Elections folks to be sure that they push out sufficient information so that every member of the public knows what they can use and how they have to get it.
I would think you can find it on our website as well as the little memos, the things that come out from our media.
I believe that you can.
Madam Manager, also, because this is a new, new thing for the voters, there may be some concern, some confusion, because we haven't had the voter ID before. So would a member of the Board of Election or the Election Board Manager would be available to come out to organizations to talk about this as a means of clarification in terms of voter ID?
Absolutely. I'll share that with Dave Davis, Elections Director, first thing in the morning.
And I think this is really important because it's different. And, you know, maybe we could get the paper to put, do an article on how it's different.
Did you hear that?
Tinder. Oh, I know. I mean, I've read some of it, but let's, it's coming up.
We will do that. We will, and we will also make as many robust efforts as we can on our county channel, on our website, and Mike Taylor and I will work with John Jones and Public Information to be sure that we push out everything that we can push out.
One of them.
Next item, if Mike Taylor would stand up?
Mike Taylor in the house, here he is.
Our Deputy County Manager and Chief Information Officer. I wanted to recognize Mike because for those of us who attended the National Association of Counties Annual Conference this year, we had the pleasure of observing Mike receive on behalf of Pitt County the Digital Counties Award. This year, we were ranked seventh in the nation for counties our size for our excellence in our digital abilities. We were recognized for our efforts towards cybersecurity and our efforts to engage the community through digital aspects, and I couldn't be more proud of our MIS department under the leadership of Mike Taylor. We have received this award multiple years in a row, and we continue to pressure him to get those numbers even higher.
For the public state, Mr. Mike Taylor, would you stand up again? You've done something good.
So, very appreciative of his efforts. The next other good news item is a report that some of you may have heard about or I may have talked to you about, but I wanted to be sure the full board was aware and share this at our public meeting. And Kelly Andrews is here as well, if you have any questions or she has anything to add. But I was thrilled that at the July 27, 2023, meeting of the Greenville Eastern North Carolina Alliance Board of Directors, they adopted changes to their bylaws, which recognized the critical role that Pitt County government plays in economic development. And as you may have observed, because it's hard not to observe, our relationship with the Greenville ANC Alliance has been very productive. We have a positive partnership, we have results-driven strategies, and we have offered and shown the best outcomes that we have ever done working together towards economic development in Pitt County. So as a result, they changed their bylaws to allow a county commissioner to sit on the Board of Directors of the Greenville ANC Alliance as an ex officio position based on being a county commissioner. They have also allowed for the Board of County Commissioners to appoint a member from Pitt County to serve as a voting member on the Board of Directors of the Greenville ANC Alliance, and they have invited the county manager seat as an ex officio seat, voting seat, on the Executive Committee of the Greenville ANC Alliance. I think that speaks volumes to their commitment and recognition of Pitt County's valuable role in this process and our reciprocal offering this year in the budget of an allocation towards marketing and lead generation that we've done now two years in a row, and we are thrilled to see that partnership continue to strengthen for the good of economic development in this community.
I think it's great as we work, as our manager works hard to make Pitt County a true leader in the east as well as among the top in the state in leadership.
So as a follow-up, thank you, Madam Chairman, we will come back to you at a future meeting for you to make those appointments to the full board and then continue to cooperate, maintaining, and I say this to, just to emphasize, Pitt County maintains its independence in its Department of Economic Development, led by Kelly Andrews. If Kelly will stand to be recognized as our leader of Pitt County Economic Development, who does incredible work in partnership with multiple community partners. And so I think this is just a continued indication of our role, how our lanes combine to produce the best outcomes that we can with regard to economic development in Pitt County. So I think this is excellent news for us. Any questions? Okay. The next item I have, before we go to your NACO reports, and this is one where I'll need some action if the board will consider it. You may recall that we have, we are participating in a Hazard Mitigation Grant buyout program resulting from Hurricane Florence. So last October, the state authorized Pitt County to locally administer Hurricane Florence's buyout program, and planning and legal staff have worked very closely since that time, since that approval, with the owners of 17 different properties that qualified for the program. So now we're at the point where the survey work has been completed, appraisal and title work is underway, and the real estate transfer and essentially the closing, the real estate closing for some of these properties are slated to occur in the next few weeks. In the past, the manager has delegated the county attorney or assistant county attorney to sign the necessary paperwork at those closings. We didn't have, in looking for that chain of authority, we thought the safest course of action was to bring this to the board and ask you to authorize the chairwoman to sign a letter that authorizes the assistant county attorney Matt Gibson or the county attorney Brian Wardell to sign all closing documents associated with the Hurricane Florence buyout program grant HMGP 43930028R. So we'd have that on the record here. If the board is in agreement to continue that past practice.
What is the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair, move.
Move by Commissioner Nunley, second by Commissioner White. Thank you. That's exciting voting. Pass unanimous, Madam Clerk.
And then the last thing I have is our opportunity for those who attended the NACO Annual Conference to provide any reports if they would like.
I'm going to be last and quick. We have, who want to go first? Me? Oh, no, no, Lee would go first. Speak up, speak up.
I like to say, since they are slow in talking, it was hot in Texas. I walked around with a light shirt on so I could stay clean and a bottle of water in my pocketbook so I could stay dehydrated. The most exciting part, hydrated, the most exciting part is I attended the Community College in Travis, Texas, and I thought it would be ideas as we look into this regional collaboration that we have started addressing and talking about. Because it is a true, if you want to know how it works, go on the website, because I'm about to end my presentation, because that was something very interesting as well as the digital thing, it's a digital county. But go on the website to Travis Community College. And we hope that this will go forward because it is quite an exciting time with having the region coming together so that we don't have to raise our taxes and grow and develop for our citizens so that our citizens can be happy by keeping their taxes where they are. That's the end of my report.
Madam Chair, so one of the things that I always am super excited about when we go is to see how much, when we meet with other counties across the nation, how we are doing things on the cutting edge, often when we hit these seminars here, how well-plugged in our staff is to current trends, how creative our team is, and it just further confirms what I think we all know, what a stellar job our county staff does. So that's always really great. But, and I think this is something that doesn't happen a lot at the national level, but it's also really, really encouraging as someone that serves in government, to be in a place where you have so many different viewpoints at a national level, where you really see people collaborating and working on solving issues just like we do in a nonpartisan way, not bickering with each other, but just really working on the issues that we all know are pressing for our communities. And cities as large as Austin where we met this year deal with the same issues that we do and communities smaller, right? And it's just really, it's really great to see that at the county level, people are working hard and not getting engaged at that level of acrimony that we see, and that's always just really encouraging.
Do you know you couldn't walk in the elevator and push a button and the elevator took you there? I mean, by the time we learned how to work it, it was time to come home. But it was purely digital, and it was my first experience, and I found that really fun. Melvin, what about you?
Well, Madam Chair, thank you for asking. One of the concerns that I had, I had the opportunity to go into AI, unofficial intelligence, and this was, this was, this of the future, and it's here now. And in the right hands, it could be very positive, but in the wrong hand, it could be very dangerous. So I just wanted to point that AI is here and I think is here to stay, but it's very interesting.
Madam Huggins?
I agree with Melvin that AI, that's very interesting. And of course, as Commissioner Nunley said, it is always interesting and to network with other counties, even outside of North Carolina, to see what they're doing, and you get new ideas for us. I will have an opportunity to serve on two committees, as an appointment from the National President, the Healthy Counties Caucus, and the Rule Caucus. So I'm looking forward to.
Rule?
Rule. Right. Yeah, so I'm looking forward to working with the new National President and their cabinet.
Thank you. I think we. So what now? You ready?
Yep.
Good. Keep going?
Yeah.
Okay. It was interesting, right?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Good, thank you. So we can make up some time here, item for consent.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make the move that we approve the items for consent.
Motion by Commissioner Nunley and second by Commissioner McElhaw, and we're voting. Unanimous, Madam Clerk. Mr. Rose, oh, thank you so much for getting to the podium. Oh, my wonderful.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. It's good to be back with you tonight. I want to talk a little bit about parks and recreation, but first some updates, kind of a refresher. It's been a while since we've been together, so let's talk about a few things, recreational inclined to talk, get you further along when we start talking about some potential changes with the provision of recreation services in the county. So just remember, this board approved this site plan out at our North of the River Office Park as part of one of the community centers. So with that, had different phases we were going through, and certainly, one of the first things, the very first phase, would be building the community center there. So not only there, but at the Alice Keane District Park, there's a similar feature or structure to be built there, and I'll just show you, this is a schematic. You can see to the left of the structure, the green roof, that is the community center that's being proposed. Just to the left of that is the existing community schools building. So just to give you a little idea of what's being proposed, again, here's the community schools and recreation center there on, at the district park. There'll be a breezeway connector, activity space, restrooms, lobby area up front, our gymnasium with some mechanical rooms out back. This area in purple is actually an alternate bid. This is some additional activity space that could be built if we have enough money to get there. So where are we in the construction process? We're right at the very beginning. Our engineering staff's been busy at work getting the bids out just last week. We'll be opening bids in a staggered fashion for the office park on September 13th and for the district park on September 20th. So on towards the end, that's where you come back in with hopefully approval of those bids for the contracts at your October 16th meeting, so be prepared for that. The other thing that's in the works is the Comprehensive Parks and Recreation Plan. We've got those RFPs out for, in July, the proposals were due today. So staff members will be working on selecting that firm in September. We'll be developing that plan over the upcoming year. So those are just a couple of items that are recreation in nature, but there are some other discussions that have already been in place between county staff and Pitt County school staff about the provision of recreation services throughout the county. There have been changes, certainly COVID was one of the catalysts there in bringing changes at the school sites, how these school sites may be available or not available as they used, once were. We still know that we need to be able to use those school sites, so there is a lot of discussion about maximizing when they are available after school hours, how can we gain access to those. But just as importantly, with these new community centers and some of the improvements and activities out at our district park, how do we staff those effectively and make sure we've got those in tip-top shape when they come to reality? So with that, our request for tonight is to gain your authority to move forward with further. to move forward with further discussions with Pitt County's school staff to talk about a transition of community schools and recreation over to a county division. And also revisit that joint use of facilities policy. That's been very effective. We've won awards off of that policy, but we need to revisit it because things have changed. So that's our recommendations for tonight, Madam Chair.
We need a motion.
We do.
We need a motion?
Motion.
Did you understand? Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith and second by Commissioner. Holloman. Nunley, were you? I was trying to get your name right and looking at my cheat sheet and everything. So Commissioner Nunley, I'm sorry, thank you. Let's vote. My vote in time. Unanimous.
Thank you.
Go to work. Next item.
Kelly Andrews is going to provide an update on a Golden Leaf Fund for the Aiden Water Line.
So thanks again for having me, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I've got a couple of items for you tonight. Number one, on July, excuse me, on June 29th, the Golden Leaf Foundation awarded Pitt County $1.5 million for the Aiden Water Project. And this project entails improvements to the water line serving the Aiden rail site and all of the Aiden Industrial District. This is going to help facilitate expansions, new investment, tax base, and all the new jobs that will go with those. So we respectfully ask that you accept the $1.5 million Golden Leaf Grant Award, approve the corresponding budget amendment, and authorize the county manager to sign and execute all documentation that will enable the receipt and dispersment of funds for the Aiden Water Project.
We need a motion. I second that. Motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Ward. Let's vote. Any questions? Next item.
Okay, related to this item, on August 17th, the Department of Commerce approved a $300,000 utility grant fund based on a pre-application submitted for the same Aiden Water Project. This will require 25% match by the county or $100,000, and will provide the remaining funds for the water project, which has a total of $1.9 million. So we ask that you provide a resolution of support that includes that $100,000 match and approval to submit the full application for the utility fund.
Motion.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Huggins, second by Commissioner Smith. I think I got it right. Let's vote. Unanimous, Madam Clerk.
Thank you so much.
I think you've got another one, don't you? Oh, that's it? All right. We're up for Attorney Waddell.
So I'm the reference person. I didn't actually know I would have to say anything about this. But I believe this matter is an exemption from the.
We're going to help you. Keep going.
Oh, okay. The Mini Brooks Act, in order to allow surveying services for two parcels, 29072 and 29310, to be sold. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, to get the surveying services so that the property eventually can be sold. There are no legal impediments to it. I have consulted with Matt Gibson about it, and everything is in order. So there needs to be a motion in order to do that.
I second that. Motion by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Nunley, that we approve this action. Let's vote. Is it there? Unanimous, Madam Clerk. Thank you. We did talk about this item, Attorney Waddell. Before you came, we were familiar with it from a couple of.
Okay. Well, good, I'm glad.
I thought it would be nice for everyone to hear your voice tonight.
Well, then I've got the next one.
Okay.
This is disposition of property owned by the Pitt County School System. There's a portion of property that is owned by the school system that they are interested in selling to a neighboring property owner. They have determined that they want to do that. And, but the statute requires that the property be offered to the county first, and if the county refuses that first offer, that option, then they can go ahead and sell it to the neighboring landowner. And so we need a motion to.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner McLahorn, second by Commissioner.
Second.
White, I heard it, I heard it, thank you. Let's vote. We're voting right now. Unanimous, Madam Clerk, next item. I think that's you, Janice.
It is, Madam Chair and the board. You have three members attending the NCAA C conference later this week, and you need to designate a voting delegate.
Well, since I have been, we've been picking on Melvin. If you want me to, Commissioner McLahorn?
Well, I was going to nominate you.
Okay, all right.
I second that.
I'll take it.
I call the question.
I will be the voting delegate at this, by the people in attendance. Let's vote. That we have selected and duly authorized me to be the voting delegate at NC, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. Lord have mercy. Next item. That's something I really liked today. Item on the next agenda item is page 167.
This is an appointment to the ABC Board. It's being recommended that Ann Floyd Huggins be reappointed to serve on the ABC Board for a full term that expires August 19th, 2026. It is noted in your packet that this would be an exception.
Is that all right with you, Commissioner Huggins?
Second.
It's been motioned by Ward and second by Holloman. Commissioner Holloman.
Yes, ma'am.
I dig it down. Let's vote. First to Melvin, okay. Clerk, Commissioner Huggins, represent us on the ABC Board. Next item is Health Board.
Yep, it is being recommended by the Board of Health to fill the vacant seat with the attribute that you must be a dentist, to fill that with Dr. Robert Penner.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Huggins, second by.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Let's, oh, good, we were on the road, let's vote. I thought we were going to be here till 12 o'clock, and I tell you, I knew I wouldn't be worth it, but I saw that. We have one more, right?
Yes, and an appointment to the Pitt Community College Board of Trustees.
I'd like to appoint.
Commissioner.
Excuse me.
I saw his hand.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Mr. Tom Kulakowski.
Call it, call it.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, we got it. Is that?
Second.
Is that?
I thought you'd make a nomination.
Oh, you would, okay.
For Kathy Frazier.
I'll second that. So you have a motion on the.
We have to have a motion on the floor, and we have two nominations for us to consider. The last one is going first?
So what, if I may, and I'll defer to the county attorney as well, you have a primary motion on the floor for Tom Kulakowski. If you want your second motion to be a substitute motion, you can do it that way. Your rules prescribe nominations, nominations don't require seconds. So you can vote on them, you can deem your second motion on the floor to be a substitute motion and vote in reverse order if you'd like to handle it that way.
Can we take them in the order we did it? So how do we want to do it?
She just said to do it in reverse.
According to your rules, you would do it in reverse order.
Okay.
And have two motions on the floor at the same time.
Okay, may I ask a question?
That is correct. Are there two appointments to the health board?
There's just one and two nominated.
Okay, Madam.
I'm waiting for our esteemed attorney.
So you would vote on the second, the second motion first?
Now, voting, one for and two against?
Correct.
Okay.
One is for the person, two is against the person.
Okay.
So can we clarify who the second nominee was, please?
Kathy Frazier.
Kathy Frazier.
Well, you know, I just want to just point this out, in all fairness. Ms. Frazier has been on the board for three terms. And in all fairness, Mr. Kulakowski has been contributing a lot to the county, citizens of Pitt County, and he's asking for. So I think that we need to have fairness, to have representation for our county. So this is why I'm very adamant about getting someone in his caliber.
I would also like to make a comment. Melvin, you know I love you. But Ms. Frazier is a retired educator, and I know that we oftentimes make exceptions to the rules for appointments for other boards and terms. Like I believe didn't Commissioner Floyd Huggins, wasn't her appointment against our rules? So we don't just need to pick and choose who it applies to. So I'll say that.
I was just looking at the board member, Pitt County College Board of Trustees, Madam Chair. And I believe in our packet, it was noted that Ms. Frazier was not, I guess, eligible for reappointment, except there was an exception. But then I looked, and it's been over 13 years that she's served on the board.
Ooh.
And while I, and I don't personally know Ms. Frazier, and I think that her term of service would indicate that she has served Pitt County Community College Board of Trustees well. But we have a lot of people in our community that are open to serve and willing to serve and competent to serve, and I can certainly speak that Mr. Kulakowski is certainly qualified and well-connected, and would, I think, would bring a lot to, would bring a lot to the board.
I appreciate that, Commissioner Nunley, coming from you. You know, I talk about we stay on the same board forever and a day, and we need to spread it around a little bit so everybody has experience. I like that. Any other comments? So we will vote. Item number. On our, on our sting technology here. Number one would be for Kulakowski, is that what?
Number one would be yes for Kathy Frazier. Number two would be no for Kathy Frazier. If that motion passes, then you don't go to your next motion.
Okay, so number two is no for Kulakowski. Okay.
Frazier.
Frazier.
The person you're voting on now is Kathy Frazier.
Got me right. We'll vote for this one.
And one is for and two is against.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. We're ready?
I'm ready. We're ready for the board to jump up. Okay, we go. I think I hit the right thing. It's an even vote, so what we do, Mr. Attorney, it failed. That's what it says.
I don't want to steal his thunder, but your rules of procedure require five votes to pass.
Is that all right with you?
Well, right, the vote, the vote is no. The vote, the vote is that she was not, she was not approved, she failed.
All right, thank you. So now we vote for, for Kulakowski.
Tom Kulakowski.
Kulakowski, I got it right. Kulakowski, Kulakowski. Okay, now yes?
One is yes, two is no.
And two is no. What we got? We're waiting for, oh my goodness.
So.
Now, what did it, did it change? I tell you what, can you take this off because it looks the same way?
No, it is, it is, it is, it is a new vote.
May I ask a question?
The second, the second motion failed as well. So neither, neither person has been appointed.
Neither one have been appointed. Now we're having a question from Commissioner Huggins.
Okay, we have one commissioner not here, so his vote doesn't count either way?
No. According to policy, you have to be here in order to vote.
Okay, I just want to ask that question.
I, I, I met with our esteemed attorney today so I could be in order and right. So y'all know I make mistakes, I'm not perfect. And he has straightened me out prior to coming. So we have not appointed someone. Someone need to be, need to reconsider their vote so we can get five positive. Tonight, if we're going to make this happen tonight, or we could wait till later on.
County manager, would it be appropriate, in a timely manner, to put this off to the first meeting in September when we will hopefully have all nine members here, and we won't be able to have a tie?
You could, or you could also consider any of the other eligible members within your packet.
We didn't speak to any of these people before we voted. I didn't know whether we would.
Well, the Pitt community left it open for us, and I really am interested and like to share with all the people in the community who want to serve. And since the young lady, since the young lady has been up there for 13 years, sound like ownership to me. Who's, who wants to talk? Figure, so I can call on who wants to talk?
Sounds like experience.
For reconsideration. Commissioner Nunley, thank you, darling.
I think that we voted twice, we have not found a member tonight. I think that there were two people that were considered, didn't have a majority of votes. I think that we need to take the votes as they stand today and then reconsider at our next meeting. Madam Chair, that's just my opinion.
If that's a motion, I'll second it.
Well, I don't know if we need a motion, because it's just business.
We're just discussing right now.
All right.
And we get an R, we get an R. We'll wait to delay this vote for the next time. Madam, yet we could invite them to come and present. All right. Y'all don't like that, so fine. Let's make a decision next time. We need five members to vote for the same person to be in attendance on this board. And that way, it, when I wanted the public to know that it takes five votes for us to have someone to be seated. We're getting ready to commission a comment right now. I'm going to start with you, since you got your hand.
Was that the last, excuse me, was that the last item?
Yeah, I've been quiet tonight. I just want to say.
And we are, and we are, at our appointments, we are at 10 o'clock. And for our agenda tonight, I would like to thank each and every one of the commissioners up here for being so time considerate that we can get out on time. Madam Huggins, you're coming.
Oh, I was just going to, going to say to Commissioner White, as far as the ABC Board, that we appoint a commissioner on that board. So I sit there as a, as to represent you, not just as a regular citizen.
Correct, I was just using that as an example because it was current.
Because either you are welcome to, to.
No, and you're good to be up there. But we have multiple boards out there, but we make exceptions multiple times for people to serve over the recommended term. So that's why I was using you as an example, since it had just happened. But there are multiple boards out there with people that have served over the recommended or allotted times.
All right, so it's no pondering, you have comment?
That's, that's my comment.
You have a comment, Commissioner McLahorn? Let's don't make it too long, because I'm excited that you all are moving through this agenda like a piece of, a race car.
No, I'm just adamant about fairness and being considerate, having positive consideration for those who are eligible to serve on these committees and commissions. And the nominee, Tom Kulakowski, has been, has been, has proven himself to be that caliber of person. As stated earlier, Ms. Frazier has certainly contributed well to Pitt Community College, no problem in that. But I think she has served her term, and we need to be fair. So I, I, I just think in the future, we should consider that very carefully.
Comments?
No comments.
Thank you. I'm going to make my last, none.
No comment.
All right, my comment. I do know that Mr. Kulakowski. Kulakowski. Has been very instrumental in the community of giving certain residents who are denied certain opportunities a chance to work at businesses. And for that, I see him as being very positive in the community. And that's why my vote went for him, even though I don't have to do that. And I think my personal comments in the future, in the past, was that we all need to rotate all of our boards so we can get a clear understanding how the county works as a whole so that Dennis won't be overloaded with a bunch of. so that Dennis won't be overloaded with a bunch of people who don't understand all of the operations. So with that in mind, I need a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner White, second by Holloman?
Second.
Okay. We both, let's go home.